So I'd like to call up, there he is. See, it works every time. Good evening, Bill. Uh, we now have a quorum. Uh, and we have the board at. So, um, like to open, uh, the Hamilton Planning Board, March first, uh, meeting. On tonight's agenda is the senior housing, uh, special permit. Uh, board needs to vote in you, uh, to, I think that's March fifteenth. And then we'll continue to hear the stormwater management public hearing. Last. And then discuss the MBTA, um, owning, um, and board business. Um, before we start, we need a roll call vote to establish that. Are here, so we'll start at, um, Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton present?
Pat Norton.
Present.
Amal.
Amal Dalquas present.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Poor present.
Cory.
We will you present.
Barney.
Barney Crouch present.
Richard.
Richard Boath present.
And Rick Mitchell present. Okay, very good. So.
Mr. Chair, uh, if I could, I'd like to welcome Robin Stein, Town Council from KP Law, uh, to our meeting tonight.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Being with us, Robin.
Thank you.
As you can see, Robin is joining us from the halls of the US Supreme Court. Um, okay. So, um, we need first, uh, on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for, uh, the senior housing special permit at, uh, one thirty-three Essex Street. And Patrick.
Before you get, can you just confirm, is this meeting being recorded? So folks know?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to continue the special permit hearing for one thirty-three Essex. Till March fifteenth.
My move to continue the motion for special permit at one thirty-three Essex from this evening to March fifteenth.
I have a sec. Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote to continue the board, uh, sports preparation of the special permit at one thirty-three Essex. Richard.
Richard Boroff I.
Barney.
Barney Crouch I.
Amal.
Amal Dalquas I.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Poor I.
Cory.
We will you I.
Bill.
Will we not?
And Rick Mitchell I. So it is continued. Now for.
Excuse me, um, Mr. Chair, but are we continuing the hearing on the stormwater management permit as well?
No, we are going to talk about the stormwater management.
For one thirty-three Essex?
No, we're talking about stormwater for Bridge Street.
Uh, that's what I was referring to, whether we would continue the per, stormwater management permit for one thirty-three Essex along with the special permit.
Uh, I believe it encompasses all of the elements of one thirty-three Essex.
Okay, I was just clarifying, so there's no confusion.
Nope, I, that's, that's fine, always important. Um, so we want to continue.
March fifteenth at seven PM by Zoom?
Yes.
Yes.
So, stormwater management special permit public hearing, we are going to continue tonight to discuss, uh, Bridge Street. And, um, Patrick, do you want to tee it up?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I know there has been a lot of uh, coordination between, uh, the applicants, engineers at Allen and Majors with, uh, uh, Will Blaze and, uh, some of the other folks at Weston and Sampson. Uh, there've been some correspondences back and forth. Uh, we've gotten a, uh, final application um, from, uh, Jared earlier today. Uh, that application has, uh, been reviewed by Will. Uh, we had a, um, uh, an email report that I sent out today to members, I believe that was, uh, two twenty-three in the afternoon. Um, it, uh, basically reviews the application, reviews the, uh, necessary elements of a stormwater management special permit application. Um, and, uh, I will, uh, yield to Florida, Mr. Blaze.
Okay, Mr. Blaze, if you could just identify yourself and your role.
Yeah, my name is William Blaze. I'm from Weston and Sampson Engineers. And I performed the peer review of the stormwater, uh, report and, uh, plan set. For lot number one, zero Ridge, Ridge Street. This is a follow-up to, uh, my initial review that was done, uh, two weeks ago at the February fifteenth meeting. It's been very, it's been very productive last two weeks since that last meeting. I've had several, um, video meetings and, and conference calls with the applicants engineer team, uh, to discuss a redesign of the stormwater management plan. The extensive, uh, modifications included updating the site's tributary area and a revision of the runoff's, uh, calculations. Uh, additionally, there was an addition of uh, two tri- two driveway trench drains to collect the, uh, the runoff uh, from the driveway tributary area. And, um, direct that towards a water quality unit. And from there, we would go to the, uh, bio retention area. Uh, during that redesign, they increased the outlet control structure capacity. Uh, because during one of my reviews, uh, once the trench drains were installed, there was a flooding issue. Um, at the property for the hundred year flood, which would basically, uh, direct flow onto Miles River Road. So that was updated. Um, the applicant added a detention bond, uh, with, um, infiltration capabilities uh, to become, uh, compliant with, uh, stormwater standard three. Um, again, they added a water quality unit for pre-treatment prior to the bio retention area. Um, this was required because, uh, the project is located within the AC EC area, uh, area of critical environmental concern, which, uh, was not presented in the previous, um, seminal. We've updated stormwater calcs to comply with the AC EC area requirements. And that's, uh, regarding, uh, the mass stormwater standards. Um, the town of Hamilton stormwater regulations. The site is designed to meet the standard of, uh, ninety percent TSS removal and sixty percent total phosphorus. Uh, we had additional modifications to the drainage wheel design where we're completed to, uh, reduce the peak velocities that were shown on the previous report. Uh, the redesign, uh, it included, uh, installing the riprap on the slope of the drainage swill to, uh, reduce the, reduce the peak velocities and minimize sediment erosion. And in, in the final design, there was an installation, I requested an installation of a liner in the design of the bio retention area, um, to help we, uh, restrict the travel of groundwater to the outlet control structure. And subsequently, that, uh, control structure went to the town's drainage system. So we wanted to make sure that the groundwater wasn't being fed into the, the town drainage system. Uh, that's just a highlight of some of the many, uh, modifications that were made from the previous submittal. And in conclusion, I would say that the, you know, the ongoing review, um, and sub- subsequent modifications that yielded a final submittal of a stormwater report and plan set that appears to meet the stormwater standards and, uh, town stormwater rules and regulations. And for subsequent planning board approval, uh, upon discussion of uh, outstanding issues that you may have had on the, uh, site planning issue. But regards to the stormwater standards and calculations, um, the, uh, appear to be in compliance for all ten standards at this point.
Mr. Blaze, I had a question about, um, some of, just a couple of your, uh, statements. And I, and I, it may be that I am just confused, but you said that a, this is on, uh, page four of six. A, a hydrologic analysis shall be performed using methods described in technical release number twenty. Does that mean it hasn't been done and must be done for your review to be complete?
No, that was, that was how they presented the results in the original, and that is meeting the standard. Let me see, what, can we call that up again so I can?
It's on page four of six. It's under town of Hamilton standards review. And it says Shelby performed, which implies that it has not been performed.
Yeah, it's, that's, the, the standard is that it shall be performed using those methods. And I said the project compile, uh, complies and utilizes TR twenty-two hydrocan. So the, the shell is what, what the rules and regulations is stating. And my state sentence at the end is saying that they're in compliance.
They did do that, okay.
Yeah, and that was in compliance during the first review.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from board members?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Blade. Um, is there any subsurface runoff in, uh, along those slopes? Now that, um, they've been completely cleared, water percolates down much faster than it would if there was still a tree cover there. And so the question would be, um, if you go down, as you come down that slope, if you dig down foot, three, four, five, six feet, you come, is there any ledge there? Is there, is there any flowing water uh, underneath the street? I'm sorry, underneath the, uh, ground that later comes out at the street? That's very typical of the other parts of Bridge Street. That the culvert on the, uh, south side of Bridge Street fills up with water and when there's no foreseeable stream coming down the hill, I live there. There's no foreseeable stream coming down the hill, suggesting there's some kind of subsurface water that, that, that gets down into that street culvert. Has there been any, uh, uh, exploration of any subsurface flow?
There's been no expl- uh, exploration of the subsurface flow under my review. This is a stormwater surface evaluation, not underground, um, water, uh, evaluations, but, you know.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, if the, if the, if the subsurface flow is contributing to flooding at the bottom of the property, then we'd sort of want to know about that, right?
Well, that, that's.
Part of the stormwater management objective.
I'll let him answer the question.
The approval that I'm presenting today does not hold for today's current conditions. It holds for when the design is completed. So ongoing, there'll be some measures that they'll have to take, whether it's, uh, you know, groundwater, um, monitoring or, uh, uh, wells to, to, to collect water and, and manage it as, as they see during construction. But as far as the final product, you know, the, the underground conveyance of, of the waters, water table and such will, will, um, be mitigated by the, the features that they're putting in.
All right, let me, let me, go, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
But currently, the, the, and currently, the condition of the site with, with the trees being cut is, is obviously going to introduce, um, more runoff to the, to the groundwater table.
Right. Let me ask you a, a couple of questions about these features of the site that they're, that they're building to retain water. The collection pond or rainforest, whatever you want to call it, at the bottom of the property. What, what? What happens when you have, you know, a big snowstorm, then a melting, then a freezing? Uh, that makes most of the soil impermeable, doesn't that also sort of invalidate the usefulness of a, of a retention pond? It's no longer a pond. And if we have rain on top of the snow, as we have three times this year, doesn't that just create runoff that eventually comes out of the, can't be absorbed by the retention pond? So it flows down to the street?
In, in theory, that's, that's something that potentially could happen. But, you know, every, every detention pond, every bio filtration system you put in has a design capacity. And there's always a potential that a storm comes along or a condition could comes along that
Right.
we would exceed that capacity. So based on.
And then, and, and, all right, all right. So, so it, it's just, um, I'm, you know, looking at the last couple of winters and where we have snow and then freezing ice and then rain on top of it, then it's just like, it seems to me that's, that, that would pose a real problem. That kind of conditioning would pose a real problem for the retention pond, you know, system.
Well, during the winter period, the, the storage available in the pond would be utilized as, as it builds up. It may not exit, uh, into the drainage system until, until it has conveyance capabilities.
Right, if it doesn't exit, then it's, then, then it's going to build up and spill over eventually.
So I could not say what the calculations would be on what type of storm event, or what type of condition would require, would, would we, uh, would, would, uh, make that happen, I guess.
And similarly, there's a, there's a management issue on the drive, a lot of water coming in on the drive, and you have two, um, you know, drains to catch it. Except when the owner's in Florida for two months and the snowplower doesn't clean the drains. And then all the water on the driveway comes down on the street. I mean, you do have to, I lived there, I had to clean my drain every single storm.
Sure.
Right, okay. And if you don't, then the town picks up the bill for the, all this water that comes down on the street and freezes and everything else.
Well, there should, there would be a mechanism for the town to hold owners accountable. If, if what they're do- what they're doing on their properties is adversely affecting a neighboring property, there's always an avenue for the town to take care of that.
You mean, you mean you would have them post the surety bond if the system doesn't work after a few winters and the street?
No, I'm what I'm. What I'm saying.
Completely reengineered, then, then, uh, they should help pay, pay for it? I'm just trying to understand.
No, what I'm saying is, you know, five years from now, you know, there's a situation where the design has failed and water is running on to Miles River Road. You know, we won't know until it happens, but at that point that it happens, the town will have recourse to, to make the owner of this property, uh, do what it has to, to eliminate that, that problem. So that they're not adversely affecting, uh, downstream neighbors across the street.
Maybe I should ask the town council if that's actually.
Right, and that's, that's, that's where I wanted to go. It is, first of all, remember, we're dealing with stormwater management regulations. Um, so there are a fixed set of rules and regulations that specify design standards and performance standards. Um, so it limits the, the purview that we have. So there are going to be instances that may occur outside the performance, um, of the system. So that's where we want to talk to Robin Stein and find out a number of things. Uh, what, what are the, what's the town's authority? Uh, my first question is, what's the town's authority in terms of granting or not granting a stormwater permit where the applicant has met the stormwater ground, um, management standards? And what are the things that the town could require in terms of long-term maintenance?
Mr. Chair, may I, um, uh, interrupt because I did have a couple of questions from Mr. Murphy that I think are important and may be very pertinent to the questions that we have for town council. So if Mr. Murphy could unmute his screen. So the questions I have for you, Mr. Murphy, is when you, uh, disturbed the land and began clearcutting, uh, the lot at Zero Bridge Street, were you aware of the town's stormwater bylaw and the town's stormwater regulations?
I was not.
Did anyone in the town give you any authority either verbally or in writing? Or did you ask for permission to go and clearcut, uh, the lot?
I did.
You did ask for authority from someone and receive it?
Yes.
And who was that?
Um, we met with the Building Department, DPW, and the Planning Department before, uh, we cleared. And I also believe that, and technically speaking, you can clear trees if you want to.
Well, I, I.
On your own property.
Uh, I'm not sure about that. And then the other question, I have several more questions for you, but did you disturb more than one acre of land?
Um, I believe so.
More than one of your what, Marnie, please?
Disturb more than one acre of land.
More than one acre, okay.
Yes.
But I'd have to have a, I'd have to have a survey done to officially determine that, but I believe yes.
Okay, so, uh, the town bylaws provide that before, um, an owner of property, um, proceeds with a stormwater, um, system, that the town can require a surety. And obviously, the town was not afforded that opportunity, uh, to obtain some type of a surety bond from you that the work would be done, um, as required. And in addition, if in fact, um, land is disturbed, over an acre of land is disturbed, um, that, uh, actually, um, can be the subject of an enforcement action. So I, I have to say that if you proceeded without obtaining a permit, uh, I am distressed to learn that you've got authority to do that from the DPW and the planning board because it's, um, contraindicated, uh, by the express language of our town bylaw.
We, uh, turn to Robin Stein. Robin, you want to?
A, a lot of comments have been made, so I mean, if you want to maybe clarify what you want me to comment on, I can try to do that.
Well.
Robin, excuse me, you keep going in and out.
Sorry about that.
So, um, there are a number of questions. Um, Barney had some specific questions. Um, I, I, I started out with a couple of general questions is, uh, what's the board's authority in terms of being able to, uh, approve or deny a stormwater special permit? If the applicant has met the standards, state standards, and the standards set by the town stormwater bylaw?
Rick, again, I, I hate to interrupt, but.
Well, you, can I, could she answer the question?
Right, but there's another issue.
I understand.
The operations manual, which is part of this permit. So it's not just a question of the ten standards, but there's this operation manual that really needs to be looked into quite closely.
Good. Could you let me finish asking the questions and then we can get into the detail? I'd like to get an overview from the town's attorney. Robin, where did you go? There you are.
I'm right here. So when I look in your stormwater bylaw, which is part of your general bylaws, um, it talks about the actions that the permit authority can take, and it says that they can approve the stormwater management permit application and issue the permit if you find that the proposed plan will protect water resources and meets the objectives and requirements of the bylaw. And generally, you know, as we interpret that is, if an applicant has met all of the requirements for obtaining the permit, then the permit, um, should be granted.
Okay, is, is, um, so if they meet the required, technical requirements of a stormwater management bylaw, what is the, um, what are the, what, what's the authority of the planning board? Can it, uh, deny an, a, um, special permit?
Well, according to your, your, and again, this is a stormwater management permit. It's not a special permit under chapter forty-eight, section nine, so it's not discretionary like that. It's more like a subdivision where if the requirements are met, the permit should be granted. I mean, there is language in here as well. It's in section F that says that the board can disapprove the stormwater management permit application and deny the permit if it finds that the proposed plan will not protect water resources or fails to meet the objectives and requirements of the bylaw. So if the, for the bylaw.
That's, that's pretty subjective language, Rob.
Yep, I'm just, I can finish the sentence, but generally speaking, if the technical requirements for obtaining the permit are met, then I think the board can grant the permit. Um, if it was going to try to deny the permit, it would need to have a basis for doing so. And again, if all of the technical requirements and everything that the applicant has to do to obtain the permit are met, then it would seem that, you know, the board should be granting the permit.
Okay, that answers my question. Now, Barney. You had some specific.
Oh, I, I, well, I, I, I mean, if the technical requirements are, are, are met, but the objectives of the object, of the object, the purposes of the bylaw are not met, I find it difficult to think that we couldn't deny a permit. But we'll go forward because operations.
Well, I think that's an important question, so I'd like to have Robin actually address it because that's going to flow into other decisions we're making in other areas.
So as far as that comment or question goes, I think you do need to be kind of deferring to your peer reviewer, um, as far as what it means to meet the requirements of the bylaw. I mean, if there are technical standards that have to be met to obtain the permit, and somebody has met those, then I think that's probably a question that's better posed to the peer reviewer from a technical perspective than, to me, from a legal perspective.
Oh, but Marnie's question gets to the, it is a subjective interpretation of the objectives of the bylaw.
And, and I will just add, uh, add a comment to that before you answer the question. If it's merely a, a question of whether the technical requirements of the bylaw are met, then the planning board has no function whatsoever. The peer reviewer could sign off and the permit could be granted. We are completely, um, at, at the mercy then of, of the technical reviewer. There, there's no function here for us, uh, to look at a bigger picture and to see what happens. And in a situation like this, where the applicant has gone ahead and clearcut the land, uh, i- in contravention of the regulations, which, uh, refer to the, um, uh, um, uh, Massachusetts handbook and design specifications, which can no longer be met. It, 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 it seems that your, uh, conclusion that if the, that they, just the straightforward technical requirements are met, the permit issues, then the planning board, um, basically doesn't have much of a role here. Am I correct?
No, I, I respectfully, I would not agree with that. Again, I think it's similar to subdivision. You have extensive subdivision rules and regulations, but ultimately, if all of those subdivision rules and regulations are met, then an applicant's entitled to a subdivision approval, and the role of the planning board is to thoroughly review those applications and make sure that everything is met. Um, you know, you know, I can certainly take a look at maybe specific concerns that, that you might have above beyond the technical requirements, and I think that's a conversation that's going to involve your peer. Uh, because I'm not in a position to evaluate, you know, o- objectives of a stormwater bylaw from a technical perspective beyond the, the comments from your peer reviewer. As to your question about the work that we've done, um, you know, certainly it's unfortunate that, that work, you know, may have been done, that should have been permitted or not. However, that's not a reason to deny a permit. And so.
Well, I mean, the, the applicant actually is subject to an enforcement action in the event that he's cleared more than an acre of land. That's right in the bylaw. And then, then in addition to that, you know, that the technical requirements of the stormwater management system may have been met, but as part of this permit, there's the operation, the operations manual that will bind, um, the, uh, the owner of this property, and it, it really is, has to be a covenant that runs with the land. But, uh, I have looked at, um, the operations manual, and I have several comments, but not least of which, that anyone who owns. That anyone who owns this property can anticipate spending thirty five hundred dollars a year and maintaining this system. And so.
And where did you get that number?
It's right in the. In the application that was submitted. In fact, it's on page twenty five and it was prepared by Ellen and Majors.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we. We knew where that was coming from.
Right.
So. Okay, sorry, I thought you were asking me a question.
No, so I have. Concerns about the manual as it is presently written. Because it refers to the owner as. You know, some investments and it doesn't refer to any successor and interest. And. Then when you actually take a dig deeper dive into this operations manual, you can see that enforcement. Of the obligations imposed on the owner to maintain the system. In perpetuity are, are considerable and. I, I just think enforcement is how, how do you enforce this? I mean, it's basically what? What property owner is going to subscribe to all these? Regulations with respect to fertilizers and, and, and things like that. And I did, I actually looked at the fertilizers that are listed. I, I have the older version, but it refers to merit and, and some other fertilizers which contain. A, a very noxious chemical, a very. Deleterious chemical to the environment and in areas where the, the groundwater is shallow, I mean, the. So the water level is shallow, there is the risk that this merit, emiclopramide, can get into the groundwater. And so I don't even understand why. The use of that type of fertilizer is permitted and also the use of de-icers is permitted. Under these.
So. So, so Marnie, you, you really get into the weeds on this one.
I am.
I get it.
We couldn't.
Oh, stop, stop, get it. The question is enforcement. What is, what are the tools that the town has? Or authority or powers? To enforce or ensure, if possible, the maintenance of a, an approved stormwater management system. So I think. So I think I'd like to ask that question of Robin Stein.
Sure, again, if you have technical questions about an aspect of the. Application, including the O N M plan, I would direct those to the peer reviewer. You certainly can approve this permit if you do so with conditions, so you can make clear, for example, that. You know, the compliance with the O N M plan in perpetuity is required, that will bind future owners. You know, the, to the extent that you were to approve this and that you were to condition it on such compliance and somebody would be out of compliance. Then you have the ability through the bylaw to do enforcement and that's in section twelve of the, of the bylaw. Oh, sorry, not twelve, that's. Well, my screen just went blank here, but in any event, the bylaw does contain. Enforcement provisions, you would be able to enforce. The. Requirements of the permit and they, you know, they'd be required to.
So I, I, I think the, I think the issue here that. Probably everybody struggles with on the planning board is if we approve a system. And the operate, the operation and maintenance procedures are not done as, as required. And the system fails and. You've got ensuing problems, nobody's, as I understand it. Inspecting this on an annual basis to make sure the operation and maintenance procedures are occurring. Is that? As far as between Patrick, Robin. And anybody else that's been involved in stormwater management design and operation, am I capturing the? The.
The problem?
The essence, thank you, the essence of the problem.
I mean, that's, that's something I. Maybe Patrick has, can talk more about experiences in the town. But again, you can approve a permit. Have suitable conditions on the permit and require compliance with the O N M plan. And you can enforce the permit to the extent that. It's not complied with. You know, to the extent that there, there may be other externalities, you know, that were raised earlier, the town's ability to address those. You know, is going to be fact specific, it's going to depend on when what's going on, it's going to depend on the impact. So there, there isn't a. Guarantee of what the town can or can't do in the future. It would have to look at a particular situation. But certainly.
Okay, got it, got it.
I, I can tell you that the, the DPW director. Does want to see that. Projects. Like this, like one thirty three Essex, et cetera, larger projects that have some drainage implications. Has an ongoing review mechanism as part of it. I can tell you that we can build a lot of criteria into decisions relative to herbicides, pesticides, those kinds of things, but. You know, unless you're there. I, you don't really know, to your point, Marnie, I get that. However, I do think that. The vast majority of property owners. Like yourselves, like the people I see on the screen tonight, they want to do the right thing and typically, that's what we look forward to. I can tell you, and let me finish. Just another footnote, the town has no regulation whatsoever to keep a property owner from cutting a tree. On their property if it's outside of a scenic roadway right of way.
Rick, I can add some information about.
But Patrick, that makes no sense. That makes no sense. With respect to a stormwater management permit.
Rick.
Okay, let, let's hold on. So Richard, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is very similar to something that I encountered a while back, several years ago with pesticides, DDT, for example. The Concom would have. The right to be involved with this. The Board of Health. Because it could be deleterious or not to people's health. And. Those would be the two boards, the two other entities that would look into this if they had to.
So. Barney, I understand your frustration, but this is, this is the. Deck of cards we are dealt.
Well, I can just read to you, Rick, though, the performance guarantee and it says the permit authority may require the applicant to post. Before the start of a land disturbance activity, a surety bond. So that suggests to me that we, we start there. And I think that we do need a performance guarantee and then the operations manual has to be amended to provide that any owner, not just the owner, has to find. On page one is a summit.
So the performance guarantee would be that the system is built to the standards as specified and approved in the stormwater permit.
Yes, and then.
Okay, let me finish. So that's fine. And. My concern, and I think the concern, not only in this project and the other lots on Bridge Street, as well as on, on other developments that we're thinking about is. What's the, what is, what are the long term? Maintenance and operation. Now, Patrick has said, most people will do the right thing. We hope that's true. But subsequent owners may or may not know what the right thing is to do when they buy a house. And they've got a stormwater management system that they've never had before and they don't know what it is and operates and what are the requirements? So that, that's, that's the gap. That I think we're all struggling with.
Well, the operations manual would have to be recorded. It would have to be recorded so that anyone.
Understood, understood. That's all great. I get it.
The other thing it could provide is that the, that in the event of any default, you know, the town. If it learned, well, if the culvert over, you know, was right, if water's running into the street because of a failure, the town can step in. And obtain a lien on the property to make whatever corrective measures that are required. So this document, if it is recorded, puts the world on notice, any potential buyer, any mortgage. Mortgage on notice. That the town could come in and get a lien on the property to make any kind of repairs to the. Stormwater management system. That is the only way to protect the town in the future. I mean.
Robenstein is, is, is that true? If the systems, if these systems that they're installing on Bridge Street. They're installed to standards, so the surety bond is returned and then the eventual buyers of the house. Find it's very difficult to maintain them and they don't maintain them and the street floods. And then the question is, does the town have recourse? Against those buyers? It's, the developer has long since gone from this. Does the town have any recourse? To, to, you know. Put a lien on the buyer, on the, on the new owners. For the cost of, you know, redesigning the street culvert system to handle.
No, 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 it would be, they would be, they'd have to redesign a stormwater management system, not the street.
So.
Management system that goes with the street.
So there's two questions, I think, there. And if I'm wrong, feel free to interrupt. So there's, there's two issues. One is, are you talking about? If they build and maintain the system as required and there are still issues. Versus if they don't build and maintain the system as required. So. The stormwater by law. Already provides that the permit authority shall enforce all violations of the stormwater management permit approval and conditions. So if you issue a permit and it's conditioned on it being constructed and maintained a certain way and it's not being done so, then there is. An ability of you folks to take enforcement to require it to be maintained appropriately and that's in your by law.
Who is, who is the enforcement against?
Then, then, well, again, so you'd be issuing a permit, the permit would run with the land, there would be a condition in there that all subsequent owners had to comply with the permit. And with the O N M plan. Again, you, it, it, it may be possible to actually amend the. And as Marnie suggested, to indicate that it, you know, will apply to all future owners, I'm not sure, but we certainly would make it a permit condition. So any future owner of the property would be responsible for ensuring the ongoing maintenance. And if they weren't, then you have enforcement abilities. Through the bylaw. To the extent that somebody builds and maintains and operates the system as designed and there are still issues. Then we would have to take a look at what the are and what's happening. But I can't say that the town would be able to just put a lien on the property.
Well, if, if, if someone were on notice that that was a potential. A circumstance in the event that they didn't comply with the operations manual, would that be a problem? I mean, if it was part of the, a covenant that ran with the land, you would be essentially, anyone who bought the property would be granting the town the right to. Step in and, and repair or remediate. In, in the event that the owner failed to do so and, and then the town could be coup its. Investment.
That you have the ability to enforce. So if somebody is not operating this the way that they were supposed to, then. You can enforce that. I, I don't know that if you put a condition in this approval that the town can automatically lien a property. I'll be honest, I don't know that they can do that and I don't know that that's a condition that would survive challenge. It's certainly something I could look into and get back to you about. But.
You definitely should.
Sure.
I mean, because that, that's a question because this, this is going to come up more, you know, more frequently. You're breaking up.
Sorry, but I just want to be clear with what I'm saying on that issue. It's twofold. One, I don't know that they can just lien a property. Even if you put it in as a condition, but two, if you put that in and it's challenged, I don't know that a court will uphold that condition. It's reasonable if.
Yeah, that.
Your requirement.
Right, and that, that's what we're looking for is for you to research that and determine if there's any case law that. Would provide guidance to the board as to what kinds of authority, powers. Town might have. In conditions. And. And as, as far as Marnie is indicating whether liens can be put on the property if it's failed to be. Properly maintained, because this is going to be an issue with eight other lots on this. On this street as well as other properties that. Are before the board. So we're very interested in knowing what the authority of the town is.
Yeah, the enforcement provisions are, I, I think, a little bit ambiguous. They seem to me to be more directed at. The construction of the stormwater system as opposed to what happens fifteen years from now.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the stormwa, the town stormwater by law. It's section, we're on the same, I'm assuming you're looking at the same paragraph, it's section. I, or paragraph I in section six. That says the permit authority shall enforce all violating. Stormwater management permit. So if permit approval and conditions. So if you issue an approval and you can. That the. Runs with the land, that the owner of the property, their successors and assigns, et cetera, will at all times have to be in compliance, both with the construction, the design, the operation and maintenance of the system as. Proved, then that's what they're going to have to do.
Yeah, we understand that, Robin. The question is, oh, what kind of legal? Record do we have? That can, as Barney has suggested. Put a lien or other instrument into the. The, on the property. That gives the town a direct. Mechanism. That would be punitive enough for an owner to recognize during the transfer of property. That they have a, a legal obligation that could result in some significant financial hardships, should they fail to maintain the system. That is the heart of the question that we want an answer to.
I, I will look at that.
Yeah, and that was to Bill's point, because if people are flawed, they can't do it.
Okay.
Mister Chair. I think it's a good opportunity to allow Mister Murphy to give us an indication of what he's willing to do. I'm sure that he doesn't want us an unsuccessful piece of property. I think it's appropriate that. We have some discussion from him. We're talking about worst case scenarios in perpetuity with no ability to address them. Every permit has potentials to work through those kinds of things. I think Mister Murphy is here, has willingness to work with the community.
I think if I could actually let our engineer, Bob Clark, speak, he has experience with, and I will remind everyone, this is an, an A R, A and R lot. He has experience with A and R lots and subdivisions all over New Hampshire, Massachusetts of all different sizes with stormwater that is, that's so complex, it makes this look irrelevant. So I'd actually like to hear from him a little bit and he can probably shed some light. On what our stance is.
Good evening. My name is Robert Clark from Allen and Major Associates. I don't believe you can put a lien on a piece of property on speculation. I think the lawyers would have a field day with that. The proper vehicle. That I think you're looking for is we called out in the stormwater O N M plan. That is thirty five hundred dollars per year. I think you could probably. Put a condition on the permit. That has John Bond thirty five hundred dollars to maintain the system. For maintenance. I think that's proper, that's, that's, that's done all the time. He could put a bond in perpetuity for thirty five hundred dollars to maintain his system. If he does not maintain the system and there's an issue or there's a blowout onto the road, then the proper course would be enforcement orders. That they would have to levy on the property and whoever the current owner is. That, that, that's how it would be.
But I. Robert, does that? You said put a, a, a post a bond in perpetuity, does that bond? Carry with the property in perpetuity?
Yes, I believe. The way they would probably structure it is that there would be thirty five hundred dollars. Well, they're going to bond the work during construction.
That I understand.
Yeah.
We all.
If, if, if we, we calculated out that it's about approximately thirty five hundred dollars to maintain the system, then they could put a bond on the property, it would. It would sit there. I'm sure John could figure out a way to roll that into the sale of the property and then. If there's ever a washout or, or they don't maintain their system, then, then the proper course would be to levy fines that would far exceed thirty five hundred dollars, I'm sure.
Right. My point was that, that the owner would consent. To a lien only in the event that the town had to expend funds. So the lien wouldn't be in existence until the town actually had to perform some type of work. And at that point, the town could seek to enforce the lien on the property. But an owner can always consent to someone seeking a lien in the event that there is some failure on their part. It wouldn't just exist in a vacuum. It would only arise in the event that the town actually had to expend money.
And I would just say too, one of the things we're trying to take into account here are people, personalities in future events. There are so many people that know that they're not doing what they're supposed to and even if they say they're going to. No one, someone can just decide to fight a lien even if they're in the wrong. And I don't know what I can say about someone who may do that 20 years from now. I mean, I thought I was, I really wanted to just be here as an applicant for a stormwater permit. I don't know how to speak to something that may happen 15 years from now. And I get that it's important to the town. I live right around the corner. I'm not technically in Hamilton, but I'm in the area, so I know it's a concern, but you know, from our point of view, it's been a very long and difficult process to meet these regulations. And I'm not an engineer. The town of Hamilton doesn't have an engineer on staff, which is why we had to on our dime hire an independent engineer to represent the town. Now, both these engineers are saying, we agree these regulations are met and that's where we're here to get approved. So I just don't, I'm just sitting here listening to all this stuff about 20 years from now and I get it's important, but I just, I don't know what I can speak to about that.
No, I think your point is well taken and I think that brings us right back to sort of where we started in terms of this permit is, and from what I'm gathering from our town attorney, is that as long as the stormwater permit has met the technical standards required by the state and our local bylaws, then the the planning board pretty much is required to approve the stormwater permit. I think what we're trying to determine is, are there, what is the nature of the conditions that we can and should place on that approval?
Could I speak for a little bit here, Mr. Chairman, on that, what you were just talking about, which is, you said that if we meet the technical standards, which is, that's volume one of the state stormwater manual plus, you know, our local bylaws. However, there's volume two and also the sedimentation, the state's sedimentation guidelines, and those are the qualitative parts of the state stormwater standards. And maybe Weston and Sampson could speak a little bit about this, but I understand that we can approve this application if it meets the technical standards, but there's also the the qualitative standards, which are very detailed under the state requirements. And that goes back to Bill Wheaton's question about, okay, if you remove the trees, doesn't the water move differently? And I believe Weston and Sampson's answer was, yes, it does. And doesn't it move differently under the surface? Yes, it does. So what I'd like to talk about for just a moment here is.
Is there a question here?
Yes, there is. Is I'd like to talk about what the relationship is of volume two of the state stormwater standards as well as the Massachusetts erosion sediment control guidelines in evaluating an application like this, because the technical standards, the formulas, once you get to that point, once you get to the BMPs, they're only talking about the impervious area. And we have a high water table here. One of the very first principles of the state stormwater manuals standards is first you evaluate the site, you look for steep slopes, you try to avoid disturbing vegetation. If you do disturb vegetation, minimize the creation of lawns. And if you do create, I'm not done, I'm not done. If you do create lawns.
We don't need a diatribe. You asked him a question. Can he evaluate the standards in volume two? So rather than giving us a lecture on what they are, why don't we find out if he can answer that question?
Yes, please.
In regards to the volume two, this is the item and issues that we discussed previously in the February 15 meeting. And it was a guideline, you know, basically a guideline that, you know, this lot and this applicant and this this board has missed the opportunity to work through, right? Because of the the planning effort was not, was not utilized. Okay. And that is not something that I would normally review. It's more of a case of the board has to be comfortable with the plan that was set up. Now, the, the plan was never set up, right? So, you know, you guys didn't get an opportunity to look at a site plan prior to moving on to, you know, the calculation steps, calculation aspect of it. So.
Oh, basically.
Land did they disturb? Should they disturb? And discussions about that prior to the calculations was never done. So the implementation of, you know, erosion control measures and leaving as much land as possible to natural, natural vegetative state was not done and not discussed. And I think that's an opportunity that the board has to review and discuss and feel, you know, is that enough to deny the applicant approval?
I ask a tag question to that one answer you just gave, which is simply that in your technical review of what we have in reality, the cleared land, it's considered the fact that there's no trees, it's just grass driveway and a stormwater management system. Correct? So when you say that it meets the standards, it is meeting the standards without the presence of trees and natural vegetation because of being cleared prior?
Well, it means, my write-up said that it met the standards. And I think I believe, you know, disregarding standard two, which that opportunity has passed.
Yeah.
Okay, now, that's something that, you know, the horse is out of the bond for that.
I guess, I mean, in terms of the calculations you're using, like the water, it's not considered, trees are going to soak up water and therefore runs at this rate. You have the land before you.
It comes down to the fact that under the existing conditions, under that tree cover, you're going to get a certain runoff curve number that you're going to generate runoff for the lot. Okay, now, the objective of standard two is to to minimize disturbance of natural vegetation as much as possible. Okay. If you can't minimize disturbance as much as possible, that means that you're going to have to make up for that change in curve number which you develop in surfaces by, by the BMP measures that you put in place. So that, you know, the increased runoff is not leaving the site. So they work hand in hand. The more you utilize standard two, the less you would have to implement standard one, you know, on the BMP projects, you know, elements.
So the follow-on question is, given that the land was essentially cleared and you have an enhanced level of runoff, do the current measures deal with that runoff?
No, I, I did not know that the lot was cleared. I found that out yesterday when I was talking to the engineers. I thought it was like minimal clearing to access the site for the test pits. And at this point, they're not even calling it clearing, right? It's, it's cutting. Trees were cut down. It's not cleared. Trees were cut down. So there's a difference between, there's a difference between trees cut down and clearing.
The greatest disturbed, the greatest disturbed, there's quite a few piles of loam moved around. So it's cleared and grubbed.
Right. But my evaluation and the existing conditions was not that situation. It was the forested lot. That's what we were presented to review is the forested lot, not.
Okay, now that you, now that you know that it's not a forested lot, would that change the calculations required to make a functional stormwater management system deal with the current situation?
So if it's not a forested lot, he's going to have a larger runoff number for the existing conditions that he would have to stay under. He would have to stay under that number.
And then I presume that would require changes in, you know, retentions, drainage, everything on the land if you use the runoff that comes from a smoothly graded, no tree, cleared parcel. Is that correct?
It is, but I mean, what if, what if the lot was all paved right now? You know, would I go at that, look at it and say, it's all paved, say he paved it between the time that I got this, this first submittal? Right? Then his pavement couch are totally different, right? Because it's, he's actually in this pavement. Okay, I guess I've never been in a situation where a developer has, you know, taken trees down and that would adjust what the existing conditions of the permit would be.
Right, so.
I've never run into that and.
So in other words, the calculations that you used assumed that you had a tree lot. That's not the case here. So the question is, do the calculations need to be redone to take in account current conditions?
Yeah, I would like to see what their engineer has to say as, you know, as far as defending their project.
Timeout. It was calculated on the pre-development as a wooded lot. So that means that we did the most conservative pre-development. The stormwater that we have on this in a proposed development is a harder standard to meet. If I clear the site and show it with no trees, my pre-development numbers go through the roof and I have less stormwater than I'm going to propose in my proposed development. So we're meeting the standard to a higher extent practical based on the fact that we analyzed it as a tree lot and a wooded lot. And I'd like to remind the board, this was an A and R plan. This was approval not required. So therefore, if my client cut the, scaled the project back by under an acre, we would not be in front of this board at all right now for stormwater requirements. The only reason why we're here is because he cut trees down more than one acre. So it's kind of the chicken and the egg right now, where you have to come in for the stormwater? Sure. The driving factor here is a septic. In order to get this septic plan to work, it has to be in the location where it is. Proper design, you would put the house above the septic field, so you have gravity feed to the septic. You're not going to put the house between the septic and the roadway. So the house goes on the top. You have a roadway, you have a driveway. If I snap a line on the side of the road and take out all the stormwater on this project, I'm under the one acre of disturbance. I don't need to have a stormwater permit. So if you deny the project, the outcome is going to be a letter from his attorney telling you that we don't need to meet any stormwater requirements. Right now, this project is designed for a commercial level project with 200 parking cars. We have two, we have two trench drains at the bottom of the hill. We have an infiltration system. We have a water quality inlet that treating the water at 90% prior to it even going into the biofiltration system. We have two swales, a grass swale and a stone swale. There's probably $30,000 of drainage. The Mass DEP acknowledges that single-family residential houses do not need to comply with these regulations. They're exempt. It's the town of Hamilton that require people above one acre to use this. So we've met the standard. Will's response here at his conclusion states, for the record, "The ongoing review and subsequent modifications have yielded a final submittal of the stormwater report and plan set that appears to meet the mass stormwater standards and the town stormwater rules, regulations and subsequent planning board approval." I'm sorry, I don't see any other reason or any other way that you can deny this project at this time. If you deny it, then I'm going to remove 10,000 square feet of stormwater and I'm not going to be held to any stormwater requirements and I'll be below the one acre. I'll let it turn back to woods in that one location. But I think that's, that's a really poor outcome to everything that we've done over the last two weeks to get this to where it needs to be. And it's a better design. We worked with Will hand in hand. We went through every single one of these standards and we've met them. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Okay, so I think the answer to your question, Jonathan, was if this was a clear, was a pristine lot over one acre, and people can correct me if I'm using the wrong measurement here, then the standards that you were referring to would be in place. Is that correct? Somebody want to correct me?
Unmute Jonathan there.
I'd like to hear from Weston and Sampson on that subject.
Could you ask the question again? You were breaking up at the end.
Rick, you asked the question.
Well, the question was, the threshold is clearing of one acre of land or more. My question was, where Jonathan started, and Jonathan, I don't know what the technical term is, but the second volume would apply to a pristine piece of property uncleared that was more than one acre? I mean, what's the trigger here that would require the standards that Jonathan was referring to? Jonathan, you might want to pipe in.
There's no trigger for it. They're just good practices for sensitive site, environmentally sensitive site design. They're just standard. If you're doing a stormwater permit, if you're doing a stormwater permit, volume two comes into play. If you're not doing a stormwater permit, it doesn't come into play.
Actually, the trigger is set forth in the regulations that we approved on November 9.
Okay, so what's that trigger? That's sort of, that gets to my question.
So, well, it's long. I mean, I can read the whole thing and abbreviate if you want me to.
No, no, maybe you can hold off until you find that and can answer, because I don't want to.
I have, but there are, there are eight, there are nine triggers. In the, in the regulations.
It's in nine, what, Marnie, please?
It's in the, it's in the town of Hamilton, Stormwater Management Permit Rules and Regulations, page three, section 3A. It says, "Applications for smaller projects" and it lists, you know, criteria for when it applies. You know, for example, a lot created by a previously approved subdivision plan date, this is weird, 1990 or later, which has access and frontage on a roadway that has an approved drainage system in place.
The stripper is, the stripper is one acre of disturbance.
Thank you.
That's the first line in the sentence. After that, you don't go any further. It's one acre of disturbance.
And is this what was updated in November? This section?
The whole thing was updated.
But did this section exist before November for the small projects?
Yes, yes, it did.
It did and that dimension did not change.
Okay, so it's really one acre or more where, where this applies. And that was the clarification I wanted. So, okay, so here we are. We've got a lot that essentially has been cleared. We've got a stormwater permit application before us. It's been peer reviewed. It meets the standards as required. So, and our attorney is telling us if that meets the standards, essentially we can't turn it down. Or we could, but we would be at risk for losing a legal action. So the question really comes down to is how do we condition this?
So can I just clarify one thing, because I
So can I just clarify one thing? Cause I, I used a term earlier that I feel like is maybe getting it's at least confused a bit in, in my mind. When I was referring earlier to the technical standards, I mean, your requirements for issuance of a permit. I wasn't necessarily talking about a particular standard or not. You have your stormwater management by law. You have stormwater management rules and regulations. There are state requirements as well. And my point was just that I would defer to your peer reviewer for guidance on whether or not this project meets all of those requirements. And so the term technical standards came up. I'm, I'm just referring to the requirements in general. Um, similar to subdivision rules and regulations. You do have, um, a pretty extensive set of rules and regulations. It does have language in here about the adequacy of an O and M plan. And again, you know, I think you would look to your peer reviewer for help on determining, you know, whether or not an application's in compliance.
Well, from what I've heard, and maybe I'm incorrect, is that it is compliant with our rules and regulations.
Sure. And it's just, for example, it does talk about the permit authority, which is you making the final decision of, you know, maintenance options and the O and M plan and things like that. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to be clear that when I was talking about is, are all the requirements met? These are part of your requirements. And as you go through them, I would definitely recommend relying on the peer reviewer for whether or not, um, you know, things are reasonable, whether or not these are met, um, to some extent.
Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Blaze, did you review the operations manual?
I did review the operation plan that they submitted, yes.
Did you have any problems with it?
No, I found it to be, uh, uh, responsive and, and, uh, standard, uh, procedures. The one thing that we did talk about and, uh, going forward was the stormwater pollution plan that they needed to include as far as, uh, uh, fine tuning that as, as far as that goes. They talked about doing that 14 days before the start of construction.
And do you have any, uh, recommendations for conditions we might include in, um, an approval?
Well, I mean, if you recall back in the, my original review, I brought up the concern of maintenance of the O and M plan. And who, who is going to be, uh, the authority on that? Who is going to be doing the regulating on that? Um, I did bring that issue, issue up and that was my main concern. It wasn't so much the issues of what they presented in their own implant. It was enforcement of it. So, um, we've gone a lot of back and forth here about the enforcement of it and what it's going to take. And, um, again, I did bring that issue up. I'm not sure that I have an answer. That's more of an answer between, you know, the town and the board and, uh, the lawyers, I guess. Um, it's not like, you know, this is a, um, you know, 20 house subdivision where there's going to be a homeowners association.
No, but it sets a precedent for future projects. So we want to get this right. So, uh, Patrick, I don't know if you want to opine on that or Robin Stone wants to opine on that, but, uh, some guidance here would be appreciated.
I mean, certainly I can take a look at some potential conditions. You know, I, I think you know, I only got involved in this project a couple of days ago. So, you know, we, we did our best to get up to speed for today. You know, if the concern is about specifically about maintenance, long-term maintenance, maintain responsibilities, um, you know, we can certainly look at the materials and, and put some suggested conditions together. Um, you know, I know the applicant suggested earlier that perhaps they could pose from a, of a bond. Um, it possibly, eh, put a condition together that would, you know, put that bond in place for the town needing to do, um, work on, to the extent that it needed to do some work on the system. But, um, you know, I, I would want to take a look at, you know, the kind of conditions that we, not only to pay for it, but to get you the access, you would ability to do that work, you know, um, and that kind of thing. We can certainly, I mean, it, it's totally up to you, but I know you have another meeting on the 15th. If you want to give me a chance to suggest some conditions now that I've had a chance to listen to everyone's questions and concerns about the maintenance plan.
Off the top of my head, the things that stand out to me is that we need an updated set of plans and specs based on, uh, the agreements uh, that have taken place between the applicant and, uh, Weston and Sampson. Uh, those specifications need to be accurate and based on, uh, those different points that came out of the negotiation discussions that have happened over the last two weeks. Um, we, uh, need a, uh, to refer to and require an operations and maintenance plan. We need to, uh, flesh out what, uh, a bond, uh, should be, uh, to protect the property. Um, you know, there are things like making requirements as to what types of fertilizers could and should not be used on the property. Uh, those are just some things that come off of the top of my head.
So do you want to work with, um, uh, Robin in terms of crafting a list of conditions?
Sure.
That, uh, address those criteria?
We can certainly do.
Cause I'd like to, you know, we, I think we've covered this, the wide ranging discussion on enforcement and where it applies and how it applies and when it applies. Um, but we really need to act on this. Um, so I'd like to see if we can get some conditions that address all the issues we discussed tonight and move forward on, um, crafting those and putting those in place and then having the board vote on this.
I would just like to add that I'm more than happy to work administratively with Robin and Patrick on, you know, getting those things worked out also. Cause then we might not have immediate answers in the next few weeks to a month on those, depending on what research needs to be done within the town. So.
Yeah. My, my hope is that, um, our next meeting is the 15th and that's going to be taken up entirely with a, a much larger project. Um, but certainly after that, no, and no more than that, that gives up everybody a, a month's time to come up with this, circulate them to the board so that everybody knows what they are and can comment on it. So we get to a next meeting and if we have a fixed document that everybody's seen, everybody's talked about, that we can hopefully, uh, vote on.
So we're going to be delayed for another meeting for a month on stormwater that we're just going to sit here.
Well, uh, Patrick, uh, unless, uh, I mean, we could try and get it done in two weeks. But we do have a, a large, um, project that's been going on for nine months in front of you. Um,
Because there's just nothing we could have done ahead of time to plan for this, which is why I just feel like it's a little frustrating. We spent so much money on Weston and Sampson, just going through all the stuff on top of our own engineers and because there's not already an enforcement plan in place, we're paying the price literally and figuratively. I mean, every time the board fires questions at Weston and Sampson, we pay that bill.
Well, I think we're done with Weston and Sampson.
Okay. But just more overall, you know, it's just frustrating because we would have thought that the town would have some of this organized. And it's not, and there's nothing really wrong with our plan. It's the enforcement of it, which doesn't have to be really creative.
Well, I, I take exception to that because in fact, there were problems with your plan and they were pointed out by your peer, our peer review. And you had to go back with your engineer and correct those. So.
But they're correct now.
Yeah, they are now, but it took, um, it took several weeks to get corrected.
But that's separate from enforcement. That's a separate issue from enforcing.
No, this is, no, this is enforcement. You're in the process of enforcement. You applied to the planning board to get a special, to get a permit. We're going through the process. Part of that process was to be peer reviewed. The peer reviewer found, uh, miscalculations that was had to get corrected. Those are now corrected. We're at the point to, we'd like to make a decision. If we didn't have something much bigger in front of this, we could get it done in two weeks. But, um, that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add something to the conversation?
Please.
This is in response to Mr. Blaze's comment about the horses out of the barn. As I understand it, uh, Mr. Murphy, you've got several other properties, like five other properties on the same hillside. Is that true?
Yes.
Are they all clear cut or are some?
When, uh, like I said, when we first got, uh, we're very open about what we were doing. And when we first cleared this lot, we were, thought we were able to do it. We cleared that and we, we cleared probably a 10 by 10 square on a lot down the street. And when it was brought to our attention, we stopped immediately.
Okay.
Within, within less than an hour, and we have not been back out on that site since November. And we have been going through all of this since then.
Well, the reason I bring it up is that this might be an opportunity to do something that wasn't done before. And that is have a review of those applications before you spend a lot of money on them with this planning board, whether that's something in your future, uh, whatever, whatever schedule, uh.
Well, I think, I think because of this process, I'm going to keep all of those probably under an acre because I can't do this and spend 20 plus $30,000 over three months, not building, paying interest carry, just going through. I mean, this is going to be three meetings for stormwater. I, I just can't afford to do it. So we're going to specifically design those to be under an acre. So I don't, I mean, I can't do it any other way.
All right. I'm just.
Is, is that a, you're going to shrink the lots or you're going to reduce the cleared area?
I'm going to disturb less than an acre.
Okay.
Yes.
Speaking of which, there's another, there's a, on the Q and A, there's a question that sort of dovetails with a little misunderstanding I have. Uh, this goes to Weston and Sampson. When you say that, uh, that the stormwater plan for the site adequately handles the runoff. The runoff you are talking about is the runoff that comes from a cleared grassy house site as opposed to the original tree canopy of trees that was there. Is that correct? Or, or are you using, you know, some runoff that no longer exists because the land has been disturbed? And you're saying you've got a, I mean, the way I understand it, the runoff from a cleared grassy slope is much greater than if the slope has a lot of planted trees. Now that, I, I'm just.
The runoff, the runoff component on a post-construction lot is going to be greater than a pre-construction lot. Correct.
Correct.
But when it's all said and done and all the implementation of the, the BMPs, the infiltration components, when you get to the design point of the lot, there's going to be a, a reduction of runoff off the lot. Cause it's being contained within their BMPs and their drainage, uh, improvement measures. That's the, that's standard number two. Pre-conditioned, the flows are X. Post-conditioned, the flows are Y. Uh, are the flows Y less than X? If they are, they, they meet the standard. There are many ways to get that number so that it's less than.
You're talking about the flow off of the site.
Off of this, this site to design point one. There's going to be situations here.
The flow on the site. Right. So on the site, you're using the site as it will be designed.
I'm, I'm reviewing it as if, if, if they're designing it. So they, they have to show to me and to the standard that they did not increase the runoff from the site. And with all the measures.
That means then regardless of the clear cutting, if it were left as woods, still in a finished state, less water is leaking the site than if it was completely left natural. Like almost doesn't matter that the clear cut happened because X regards the natural state of things. Y regards the finished built state of things and X is still less than Y. Right?
He, he, the lot, the trees have been cut. So yes, the runoff from the tree, the, the lot that's been cut is going to be higher than the wooded lot. But that's not.
My point is that you doing the math on the natural state of things actually implies that the stormwater management system is more successful, um, than we think because it's actually managing the water greater than the natural state of the land prior to clearing.
Right, right. Well, I mean, I mean, this is, this is something that the Allen and Major should be defending and not me. Cause you know.
I'm just trying to make sure the, the math that you did is actually like, so it feels like when you say it was done on the natural state of things, not the clear cut land. That makes us feel like, oh, well, why don't you do the water runoff on the clear cut land? But the reality of the things is whether it's natural state or clear cut, the end result of the built construction site is less water flowing from this site at any point in its history, clear cut or natural. So the stormwater management system is implied to be successful.
Yes, because if we took, if, if we took, if we took the, the cleared cut condition, those numbers would be higher than the wooded one. So he would actually show a bigger reduction than.
It would just be a way greater. We'd be more impacted. Doesn't matter that the trees were, the trees were cut with regard to the stormwater. It may matter for many other reasons, but.
Yeah, because he would be showing, he would be showing a greater improvement by his stormwater measures.
Got it. So I, I think Cory, that was a wonderful question you asked and, and clarified because of, I think that was a point of confusion among people is, you know, clear cut versus not. In fact, what, in fact, the stormwater.
I've used the term clear cut though. He hasn't clear cut.
No, no. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm.
Disturbed. How's that?
Disturbed. I'm disturbed. Um, I need a stormwater management system.
And again, I shouldn't be defending the, you know, the engineer.
No, 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 no. This is education. Um, all right. So I think that's where we are. Is, uh, any other board member have a question, comment? So I think what we're going to do here is continue this till, um, Patrick, what's the meeting after the 15th?
April 5th.
Just clarify, this is a standalone application, right? There's nothing else with it. It's just a stormwater permit.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
That, uh, uh, meeting second hence from now would be April the 5th.
Okay. So between now and then, um, between Patrick and Robenstein and, um, John Murphy, all those, uh, conditions should be ironed out, sent to board members so that on that date, we are prepared to, um, make a, um, vote. Agreed?
We can certainly do that.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, John.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, do you want to take any public comment?
Um, sure. We had, or the first one, uh, from Brad Haley wa- was why does the chairman so rudely interrupt members of the board? Um, because that's my job. Um, anonymous attendee, the peer reviewer was not even aware of the land has been cleared. How does that impact the calculations? We actually just had that discussion. Um, anonymous, anonymous attendee, if the engineer lived downhill from this lot, would he redo the math? Uh, no, it's a professional engineer. He's liable financially and professionally for his calculations. They don't change based on emotion. Um, so any other questions? I don't see them under the Q and A.
And, and Rick, I would say, you know, the peer reviewer did not know this information because I was not provided that information. I found out yesterday.
Yeah, but it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant now, right?
Okay.
Because we just had this discussion with Cory and you is that the stormwater management system will actually be removing more water than the natural state.
Rick, I think it, it would be helpful to just clarify with Will if he, since we're going to any of the public hearing, if there's any follow-up or, or additional review he needs to do based on this new information. Through you.
No, I don't think there is. I think we're pretty clear about what we need to do. Okay. So.
Mr. Chair, uh, uh, a resident Joseph Roberts had had his hand up earlier.
Okay. I, I see that. So you guys want to go into action?
Uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Um, Mr. Chairman, my question is, uh, that should zero Bridge Street meet ultimately requirements? Which I now understand, uh, probably means that they have to reduce the acreage by an, uh, about two, one acre to have the current plan work. That's fine. All right. Now we go down the street and what you're looking at is an increasing topographical difference, dramatic difference. And I've got one right across from my street right now. Dramatic difference. And I've got one right across from my street right now, which started a clear cut. Which Mister Murphy has pointed out, someone came and said cease and desist because it was going to be a clear cut. And that is all right next to another lot. Not directly across, but diagonally across the street. Uh, is even more dramatic in terms of the pitch of the land. Now, my question is going to be, since permits were not given uh, nor it appear asked for prior to, and these are clear clear cuts. What will the town do um, with respect to what permitting for any further work on that score? And what will the developers be required to do with respect to stormwater management? Hell with impact management, because that's already happened and I'm being impacted as I speak. What will the town be doing to require um, or or to get what they need for the developer's work to continue? Now, in saying this with, uh, and I think it's agreed with the the rest of my neighbors. We're not opposed to developing this this hillside. We just want it done in a manner that doesn't leave us having to uh endure actually what we're doing right now. I've got runoff that's coming down onto my back lawns. That includes silt and flood, a good portion, well, a portion of my back lawn every time it rains. And again, I repeat from the standpoint that apparently permits were not granted for what the work was already been done, if not properly asked for. I don't care. It's in the rules and regs of the town that there should have been this um scrutiny uh, prior to what has occurred. And that's cl- clear cutting. And I urge all you board members, if you haven't been down this section of of Bridge Street, have a good look. Um, because it is um, it isn't happening the way apparently the town has written rules and regulations. So thank you for hearing me out.
Okay, well, I I think we've exhausted the discussion on Zero Bridge Street. The other lots. As you heard, the applicant has stopped immediately doing anything on, and his intention is in the future do less than an acre. Which um, precludes us being involved in any stormwater permitting.
But he's already cleared. Already cleared an acre. So he has already disturbed an acre. So doesn't that mean that he's at least for those two lots? That yeah, or three lots, however many there are there, he's coming under stormwater management.
Can I just say for maybe the, can I maybe just say for the fifth time since we've been on here for two meetings that I do not own those two lots that keep coming up at the end?
Okay, good, thank you.
Eight and nine on the.
Yes, eight and nine for like the fifth time. I do not own those and they keep coming up and I keep getting asked about it and we do not own those lots. Cause these are all individual house lots. Guess what? Tomorrow I could sell them to six different people. You'll never see me again. They can do whatever they want.
Right.
It's not a subdivision. It's not one parcel.
Got it.
Um, so, excuse me, Mr. Chair, Robert Clark, I just do wanna make a distinction that cutting trees. If they don't stump them is not disturbance. I believe those other two lots, I don't know if they they were stumped or not. John, you you know, I know you've been out there, but I believe you, I believe the contractor did stop when they found out that a permit would be required. Did they stop stumping those? So those, that's not disturbance, it's just cutting?
I'm more, I'm pretty sure, but I can't speak for them.
Okay, but but your lot was was cut and stumped. The majority of it was stumped as well.
Yes, but again, you know, having known what this all went through, it's probably worth me having a survey done to actually see. Cause the whole lot's one point two four acres and there's a nice buffer of trees between the other two lots. So I'm not even sure really if we are over an acre. It's gotta be extremely close if we are or under.
Okay.
One, one, one last thing. If if we are going to move forward with conditions over the next um, few weeks, would we have an opportunity to review those so that we're 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 here for a a vote on the next hearing?
Well, if John is involved in it, then I I would hope John would be communicating with you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, John, when I say we, um, okay.
Yeah, well, he volunteered and I I think it's all in our best interest that he is involved.
Would it be prudent to close the public hearing tonight?
Well, that's what I'm hoping to do.
Okay, great.
So um, if I could just chime in on that, I would not recommend that you close the public hearing.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not closing it. I'm going to continue it. But I mean, we're going to close, we're going to pose it and continue it.
So, yeah, I would just recommend you keep the public hearing open.
Yeah, 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 I know, I got it. Okay. So.
To deliberate on any of the conditions till the next meeting. It may have questions they wanna be of an opposer or hear from folks.
Okay. So there are a couple of more questions. Uh, I'll take two more and then we're gonna move on. So Chris Small.
Yes, um, thank you, Chairman Mitchell. Um, I just wanted to respond first of all to, um, and I know this is not the focus of the hearing tonight, but I think work was stopped on lot eight because they were grading. And at that point, um, and there was incredible runoff and a flood on Bridge Street. And um, once town officials were notified, the Conservation Commission uh, got involved. So the town was involved in in stopping the uh, the cutting on eight and nine. Nine is not in as bad a shape, hasn't been graded, but a lot, but some stumping has been done and grading has been done on eight.
Okay.
I I also have a quick statement I'd like to make. Excuse me, um. This process, as you yourself accurately stated during the first the last planning board meeting, has been ass backwards. And a beautiful lot on Bridge Street, which Mister Murphy himself said was at least an acre, was clear cut and storm regulations, stormwater regulations undoubtedly put in place to preserve the environment while enabling development were ignored. If you grant this permit as is, our concern is what does that mean for the remaining lots on Bridge Street? And for the neighbors, some of who were already suffering harm due to the clearing that has once again preceded permitting. What about those lots? Granting this permit sends two clear messages. One, that builders can do whatever they want in Hamilton and not be held accountable. And two, the planning board puts developers' interests first and citizens second. We are asking that you uphold the stormwater regulations, including the use of low-impact techniques. And provide the residents of Bridge Street with the same attention and consideration you've shown the developer of lot one during this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joseph?
No, I've spoken.
Oh, okay, good. All right. All right. So um, then we'd like to take a roll call vote to continue the hearing on the stormwater management uh, permit for Zero Bridge Street. So, Richard Boroff.
Richard Boroff, I.
Can I just clarify that?
I'm sorry, we need, sorry, uh, we need a motion, motion to make that happen and then a second.
I move that we continue the uh, hearing on stormwater management on uh, the property on Bridge Street that we were discussing.
And do I have a second?
And can I just clarify that'll be till April fifth at seven P M on Zoom?
Yes, till April seventh, April second, you said, Robin?
I thought it was April.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, April second is a Saturday. I thought we were continuing till April fifth. Um, on Zoom.
April fifth.
Okay. amend my motion to April fifth.
Okay, do I, do I have a second?
Second at seven P M on Zoom.
Okay, very good. Roll call vote, Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, I.
Amel?
Amel Dalquas, I.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, I.
Cory?
Cory W, I.
William?
Bill Weeden, I.
And Rick Mitchell, I. Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. All right, so now on to discuss the MBTA residential by right zoning. Rick, do you wanna kick that off?
Who?
Patrick Raffet.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, just as a backdrop to this. As everyone understands, um, the real motivation for this from uh, the current uh, gubernatorial administration was to create more housing in eastern Massachusetts particularly. Um, the idea of yeah, imposing a type of zoning uh, that's a bit of a carrot and a stick to communities uh, that have transit facilities is something that the state has really been uh uh, hoping to advance for some time. Uh, but uh, they've created a law uh, that they're proposing a couple of years ago. It's uh, called the Massachusetts General Law Forty A. Section three A, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Requirement uh, that they have been proposing, uh, that has been uh, uh, the subject of a lot of discussion uh, from fellow communities. Uh, yeah. Anyone that has looked for attainable housing in eastern Massachusetts can tell you it's a hard commodity to find. It's difficult to create. Uh, and you know, it's clear that they, the state has a notion that creating more creates a supply that will help to decrease the level of price. So that's uh, that's, you know, a key economic component of the approach that they're taking. Um, the requirements uh, that they are seeking to propose on uh, and impose on communities is uh, for all MBTA served in other transit uh, entities that are within the state, uh, that uh, there be a uh this zoning imposed upon them. Uh, there's a a number of standards that they're imposing, including a a minimum of fifty acres of land area. Uh, a minimum of fifteen units per acre. Uh, a desire for seven hundred and fifty units per community. Um, also, uh, the units need to be family available with no age restrictions. Uh, so it wouldn't be predicated for senior housing or any other age kind of uh, restrictions to it. Uh, the projects uh, are supposed to be by right uh, for uh, each community. Uh, and they need to be no further away than a half a mile from uh, the local transit facility, whether that's uh, uh, MBTA commuter rail, rapid rail. Uh, they're also including bus stops. They're also including ferry terminals as well. Um, yeah. And an editorial comment uh, is uh, that you know, given how land is available and where it is. Uh, the idea of creating this kind of zoning and imposing it on a pre-existing fabric of development in individual communities, the way that we have uh, in our state, uh, it's uh, about a century too late to try to impose this upon us, in my opinion. Um, every T community is supposed to present and hold a public hearing on this uh, by May the fifth. I know the uh, town manager and the selectmen have had some discussion on it so far. Um, there'll be uh, more discussions as well. Uh, every T uh, community is supposed to be commenting uh, on the regulations as well as uh, uh, we're all expected to have an action plan as to how uh, our communities are to address the three A requirements. Uh, as I had mentioned, as of last week, uh, our town manager has been working with it. Uh, he's also uh, coordinating with some other North Shore communities in uh, creating a regional response uh, that will go to the state in terms of uh, commenting on these regulations. And uh, let me specify, these are regulations right now. Uh, they're not a law at this point.
I was gonna say, what is the carrot and what is the stick?
Well, the uh, the carrot is is that uh, you know, they want these projects to take place by right, and some would see that as a carrot.
I don't see that as a carrot. There's no carrot there at all.
That wants to see projects happen uh, that have difficulty in permitting. Um, the state also has three different types of grants uh, that they're sort of holding over our head if we don't get this zoning in place. Uh, that uh, we wouldn't be able to pursue those types of grants. Uh, there's also a capital.
That's not money that we're actually owed. They're saying money that we cannot apply for.
Right? You have grants.
How much money is?
Can't apply for. Yeah, right. Exactly.
We've never gotten it either.
Okay, let's not gonna do a debate here. Patrick is still. Yet, um, comments, let Patrick finish, please.
Yeah, as I'd mentioned, the uh, three A zoning is not in effect right now. Uh, it, and we do not have the final uh, um, regulatory requirements as part of that yet. Um, you know, that will continue to be seen. As I'd mentioned, uh, communities have the ability to make comment on the regulations as they are. Uh, I know a lot of communities have uh, some real issues with the idea of this level of scale, with this level of density uh, being imposed. You know, unilaterally in their communities in a way that uh, it would, if if you extend this out you know, development wise, it'd have communities pretty much looking like each other uh, from one end of the state to the other.
To what degree, Patrick? Is this gonna be shared between Hamilton and Wyndham, given that the station is almost exactly bisected by our town lines?
Yeah, actually, both communities would be responsible for their own regulatory requirements, so.
The full number?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred.
Their, their set of regs, they'd have to uh, uh, satisfy the same way that we would. And they have, uh, I think they may have significantly less ability to undertake it than we do. One of the elements to this is uh, having available land uh, within a half a mile of T stations, uh, transit stations. Uh, I don't think we have that. Uh, I do think that we have some opportunity. Uh, the property that uh, you know, is currently the Winthrop School Campus. Uh, as this board has discussed previously, uh, we have been looking at the potential for rezoning uh, that property and some of the property to the south of it as well. Um, which uh, has a real opportunity, I think, but uh, there's uh, clearly not fifty acres worth of property there. there the way that the state wants us to have. Robin Stein has reviewed our local business zoning relative to three A. She's made some comments for us. It does make some areas in where we're in compliance, but it's not a by right compliance the way that the state wants us to have. So there would be some tweaks that would have to happen to the language there. And again, the regulations aren't completed, so we're sort of shooting at a moving target, I think you could say.
Hey, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Can you, and I know Robin wants to pipe in, but can you share your screen?
Patrick, I could bring up the.
And while I have a, I have a map that I'd like to share. I don't know. I don't know what we're looking at here. Not me. We're looking at your screen, Patrick. Patrick, you disconnected from us. You're on mute.
He was on mute. Yeah, he's okay now.
Okay. All right. So I don't know. Can people see this screen?
Not yet.
Okay.
I may want to make Rick co-host too. All right, you're now co-host.
Uh-oh. That's trouble. All right. Can you see this screen?
No, yeah.
Do I have to hit share screen? Okay. You see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the half mile radius in Hamilton that Patrick's talking about. It's a half mile. They draw a circle. It encompasses five hundred acres. They want ten percent of that acreage to be zoned for at least fifteen units per acre. So you can see here at the top in the sort of pink color with the pond is Pengey. Down below it across the street is the Thrup School. Next to that is the Public Safety Building, the library. And pink is the commercial district, which encompasses twenty-five acres. You can see it goes along Asbury to Park. It goes over to the left, to far left bottom is the library. And then you can see the other streets that go along here. Railroad Ave, Winthrop, Willow Mill, Asbury, Maple, et cetera. I did a rough count in here. There's probably five properties that have a total of one acre or more. As Patrick said, the Winthrop School site is the largest of being eleven point nine seven acres. So that's probably the only site that would be available if the Winthrop School were torn down. The rest of all the properties that are over an acre are already built upon. So there is no land available to build anything unless you tear properties down. Not likely to happen, but. And I think the other thing is to point out is that the bylaw says that Title V and wetlands protection and other bylaws have to be met. So you can't, you know, override those. And if you enact, if you enact this bylaw, it doesn't mean you have to do anything with it. Just means it's there and could be used at some point in the future. There's no penalty for not doing anything with it. I just thought I'd just show you guys this app so you get a sense of what we're talking about. And the circle, if you look at it by shrink it down here, that's Wyndham. So they've got the same problem. Anyway, that's it. So I'll stop sharing this. Patrick, you want to continue?
Let me ask Robin if there's anything that she thinks that I've left out that would be important to mention.
No, I mean, I think it's just important in mind that what's out there right now are draft guidelines. I believe you have till the end of the month to comment on those. So if there are particular issues with the guidelines that the town wants to highlight, it can. And that you won't be able to tell how non-compliant you are or what the town may need to do to come into compliance until the guidelines are finalized. Obviously, these are drafts. I do expect the state's going to get a lot of comment. And then, you know, you'll get, we'll get final comments and we'll be able to then go from there as far as the timelines for coming into compliance and what have you. Keeping in mind that ultimately to be in compliance, you're regulating for as of right multifamily housing. So, you know, when you put this in place, it will likely be used by folks. You know, so, and there are certainly considerations that go obviously beyond the planning board to the town and town meeting that'll, that'll be factored into this whole discussion. But while the draft guidelines are a good place to start looking at things, they're not final and they could change.
Robin, I have a question.
Sure.
What if, instead of having it that close to the train station, the town found a section of land that met the size requirement, was maybe a mile away, was clear, could be developed? And then what if the town provided like a van service to the train station for the residents that live there? Could that be something that would meet the guidelines?
You know, there, I can't say for sure. There is some language in the guidelines for dealing with situations where, you know, the land right around the train station's not particularly either available. I mean, there, there could be communities where it's completely industrial. I mean, there's, there are factors. So I can't say exactly what the HCD would accept, but those, you know, those may be some things to talk about. Or perhaps to include in comments of the HCD that they consider giving some specific guidance on alternatives for when it's not realistic to achieve the density that they're looking for exactly as they want it. And I think that the state is aware that, you know, this isn't a one-stop shop for communities. That, you know, there are going to be communities where you can't just pop that, that map down.
If this were to be accepted? Sorry, I just quick question. If this were to be accepted as is, does that effectively mean it gets treated as similarly as like forty B for towns that are under their HUD number? Like where, as long as the land is developable, we're under a number they just could bring?
These guidelines are not the zoning itself. So the statute, you need to have, you know, so if you look at Chapter Forty A, Section Three, it talks about the need to have multifamily zoning as a right in MBTA communities, and you guys are a commuter rail community, you have a commuter rail station. So the guidelines are to tell you what you would need to include in your zoning to comply with the requirement of Chapter Forty A, Section Three, that you have the ability to do the multifamily as a right zoning. And if a town doesn't, then it, the programs, including Mass Works, that you would not be eligible for funding through. So this, these guidelines themselves are not the actual zoning. They are.
The answer to your question, Corey, is no, it's not like forty B. It's, it's a landowner, like the town, if they bought Winthrop property after it was torn down, the town could decide it wanted to use that and build fifteen. But currently, we have zoning that allows mixed juice development. We're building twenty, eighteen units on one acre at Willow Street. So we already, we already have that in, in existence. And I'm proposing that the town actually just tweak it slightly, include the word multifamily. Say we've got twenty-five acres in the downtown business district. It's already zoned. We're already building, you know, eighteen units of mixed juice, half of it affordable, half market rate rental. We're doing it. And you paid, and you, and you DCD paid substantial portion of it. So, so they do, they do have within the regs, you can't ask for exception. They are going to get such pushback on this. Small cities and small towns are going nuts over this because it's, as Patrick said, this would have been great a hundred years ago, but it's totally ridiculous now. So.
To Richard's question a while ago, you know, I think there's some real opportunities that have the potential to make for a good fit. Like say, for instance, and we've talked about the Gordon Conwell Theologic Seminary as an opportunity for affordable housing and a way to make that property work for its current property owner, the way for it to work for the town in terms of our affordable housing needs. You know, having a bus service or, you know, a shuttle service from the train station to there, creating a mini station there would, you know, in my estimation, create an opportunity to make that property workable.
It's a very fixed cost too, because the schedule's already set with the train, right?
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those unfunded state mandates. You know, they just say you shall do this. We're not giving you anything incentives. We're giving you punishment if you don't do this.
No, they're not giving us punishment.
Oh, yeah, they are. They say that if you don't do this, then you.
You won't be able, you won't be able to apply for grants which we have yet to fund.
Ah, yeah, but the Mass Works is an important infrastructure source of money that cities and towns get hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars if they apply.
Patrick, how much money have we gotten from Mass Works?
We've got none. However, I will tell you that if we were courted by a biotech firm tomorrow that wanted to come to Hamilton, who sought sites here for applicability, had, you know, a desire to be here, you know, they would be a likely recipient. So I, I, I think, you know, we need to be cautious about, you know, not cutting our nose off to spite our face because there, there are potentials in the future that we don't want to eliminate.
I think the town is, I think the town is doing a wonderful job upzoning the area around the downtown. And to allow that kind of development by right is, I don't want to touch it with a ten-foot pole, frankly.
Well, I think, Bill, to your point, there is a cost benefit analysis because I don't believe we've ever received any money under these three programs. And, and of course, there's always a risk involved. But it is a cost benefit analysis because once you go down that road and have as of right development, it could change the character of the town. So it, it, I think eventually there'll be enough pushback from these small towns that these regulations almost by definition have to change. And then I don't know how the Title V situation could affect this density and whatnot. But I, I think that it's, it's, it's a real balancing act about what is best for the town.
Patrick, what do you hear that Wyndham is doing about this? What are, what are their thoughts? Are they similar to our comments?
Yeah, there, there's a great deal of concern about scale, size, availability of land. You know, they, they share pretty much our concerns.
Not surprised. Okay, is that, is, does that encompass the presentation, Patrick?
Yeah, I did send out a slideshow that came from the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association. It was a really good correspondence that I think gives you a really good grounding in what this thirty A proposal is to communities. Again, it is not a completed piece of work that's come from the state. However, I, I think every community needs to look at it, determine if there's a fit. And if there isn't, you know, maybe the community's willing to, to take that cost. But I think to some, you know, there'll probably be some communities that will want to undertake it. Look at communities like Haverell, Lawrence, Lowell, et cetera, that, you know, some of them do have some large parcels close to train stations that could make this sort of thing work. We do not. We're a much more rural community than many are. And I think there's going to be a lot of pushback, as you had mentioned.
Is this something that would be before town meeting eventually?
If we, if we were to pursue a zoning bylaw that would help to impose this or change, say for instance, the B zoning district to create and allow for multifamily by right, absolutely, that would be a town meeting action. Marnie?
The only difference, the only difference under this law is it would be, require a simple majority as opposed to a two-thirds. Yes. Okay, so let's move on to board business. And I think the, the one thing that I wanted to talk about was minutes been an ongoing discussion point for a number of months. Marnie has done a wonderful job in preparing and editing these minutes. And however, I think we've got a, we've got an issue here. We've had three minutes, meeting minutes takers resign in the last six months. And I think that's due to the level of detail and volume of minutes that the board is expecting. And we can't continue along these lines because, and it puts a real burden on other people. And Marnie's done a great job in filling that hole recently with last minutes, which were below this fourteen pages. And I think we really need to come to some understanding of what is required by law and what we can expect in terms of having people take minutes and not continually resign because the workload and demands and it's, and expecting a level of detail is too much for them. And so, Robin, I want you to sort of pipe in here and lay out what the, what the law tells us is required in meeting minutes. And I think the important thing here is, at least when I was talking to you about that, is meeting minutes are not admissible in court. So, you know, one of the reasons for taking extensive and detailed meeting minutes is that if some decision is challenged, then the meeting minutes may become part of that. But you're telling us that that's not true.
To, to larger extent, and I can kind of address the comments as I go. So the open meeting law is really the source of the content for what needs to go into minutes. And there is an open meeting law guide that the Attorney General puts out. And so we usually, we use that as a starting base, you know, for guidance. And according to the open meeting law guide, minutes, which obviously don't have to be created and approved in a timely matter, you to include the date, time and place in the meeting, members present or absent, decisions. Members present or absent, decisions made and actions taken, including the record of all votes. Um, and obviously when you're meeting remotely, those are all roll call votes, uh, a summary of the discussion on each subject. A list of all documents and exhibits used at the meeting and the name of, of any member who participated in the meeting remotely. Under normal circumstances, now you would list everybody, so these, these were originally written for when you were having in-person meetings, if one person. Participated remotely, you would want to note that now, you would, you know, for example, you would note this was an entirely remote meeting, you would note who was there. That the chair took the roll call and introduced all of the members and, and things like that. Um, you know, I think it's good to note in the minutes, you know, for example, that we confirmed at the beginning of the meeting, this was being recorded. You know, things like that, that you want to refer back to and be able to, to know what happened. The minutes also need to include a summary of the discussions on each subject, but not a full transcript. Um, so you want to be careful that you're recording all motions and votes. Um, all of the documents and exhibits used at a meeting need to be listed. Um, in the minutes so that they can be found later. And you know, the important thing is that if a member of the public read the minutes. They need to be able to really understand, you know, what was discussed that evening. So, um, you know, I know of at least one. Open meeting law, um, issue recently that the Attorney General weighed in on where, for example. Um, the minutes reflected. That a number of questions were posed to the board, but then the board's responses were just listed as the board responded. And so the, the Attorney General's office said, you know, we need to see more than that, you know, you want to see a summary of what happened. So not just that this question was asked and the board responded, but this question was asked and um, this was the board's response, so you want to have enough. In there that a member of the public reading the minutes. Um, can have a good sense of what happened at the meeting, but again, it does not need to be a word for word transcript, you know, no one expects you to watch this and then write down. Everything everybody said, but you want it to be a good summary. Um, you know, as far as how minutes get used, and I think that goes to the chairman's point, you know, usually. When we are using minutes in court, you know, you're really only using them for things like. If a meeting was held, who was present, who wasn't present and maybe actions taken, but the substance of the conversation would be out of court statement. So even if the minutes reflect, this person said this and this person said that or things like that. Those generally we don't end up using in court because they are hearsay. Um, so that's kind of the general guide on how we use them, there are components of them that get used again, that the fact that a meeting was held. Folks who were present, actions taken as opposed to um kind of statements attributed to folks. So again, you're really looking at a summary and you want a good summary, you want the public to know what happened at your meeting. It does not need to be a word for word recitation or transcript of what happened at the meeting. Um, and then again, it's important that it just have all those basic items like the date, time, place of the meeting, who was present, who wasn't present from the board. Um, and especially make sure to include any documents used, you want to make sure to list the documents so they can be identified. They don't have to be kept as part of the minutes, they can be kept on file, but um, you want to make sure you're listing all the documents. So I hope that.
Okay, good.
I, I would just like to make a comment and, and I think that um, Rick, uh with all due respect. I don't think it's the length of the meetings, uh, the length of the minutes that's the problem because. Our meetings really uh weren't very long until recently, so. The minutes that I reviewed and, and, and you know, that people resigned, I thought one was for health reasons, but that's neither here nor there. Those minutes were not that long because the meetings were not that long, but we've had meetings that go in excess of three and a half hours, four hours. So, um, it's the length of the meetings that lead to the length of the minutes. And then in terms of the minutes, and I, I don't know whether any member of the board might want to support me. But I think that egregious mistakes in minutes should not be accepted. And I think a minimum is spelling the name of participants correctly, using um grammar that's uh. Credible, um, spelling words properly, identifying who's speaking properly, which was not the case on February eighth. Um, I, I, I know it's hard to find people to do good work, but I think if one were to compare the. Initial meetings from February eighth to the version that I did, which of course, uh, you know, with my experience, they're going to be. Um, somewhat better probably than the average, but um, there's no comparison. I mean, we had incomplete sentences, just. I, 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 I'd leave it to other board members if they share my concern, but I, I don't think the board should be satisfied with. Uh, a work product that um is, is inadequate in those regard, in that regard.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody would um. Support having bad grammar or incomplete sentences. I think it gets more to the, the length of these uh meeting minutes and I, I've been involved in over. Two decades of planning board meetings that went four hours or more and we don't have twelve or fourteen pages of minutes. Um, so I think we need to, we really need to cut down on the demand for the level of detail that. Has been produced, um, unless Marty, you want to be taking minute, meeting minutes um. For the rest of your term on the planning board.
No, but I'm telling you that the minutes that we have may be very helpful when we go to make our findings with respect to one thirty-three Essex. Because there is a lot of technical information and if nothing else, by, by seeing. By examining the minutes, you might be able to find where some point uh, uh that you're interested in. Uh, appeared and that appears in the YouTube video, that's all I can say, but.
Yeah, well, I, I think somebody can watch the YouTube video and they can get the excruciating detail um. Live and in person as opposed to reading the minutes, meeting minutes. I, I, this is a problem that's not going to go.
Documents submitted or attached to.
Excuse me?
Right, documents submitted, documents reviewed and submitted are attached to the minutes or referenced within, right?
They are supposed to be referenced and, yeah, go ahead. Robin?
Yep, I was just confirming, they should be listed in the minutes.
Listed in the minutes.
Yep, so maybe the, the author of the document or the title of the document, you want to list any document that the board reviewed and used. At the meeting, they're all public records, they should be listed in the minutes. Um, you know, and I, I think you guys, you know, you're, you're struggling with something that boards always struggle with. But yeah, I mean, if you have a four hour meeting, uh, you would expect to have some good detail in the minutes. About, you know, at least the extent and scope of discussions and, and what happened and, and again, it's so that a member of the public who wasn't there can read them. And get a good sense of what happened versus, you know, if you had a quick meeting, you'd expect to have shorter minutes. Um, but again, the, you know, it, it, it can be hard to quantify, I mean, you want to have a good summary so that, that folks understand. Um, you know, members of the public need to have a clear understanding of the discussion that occurred at the meeting.
Now, we, we know that, we, we got that, we got that, we got that, this is a, um. And I don't have an answer to this, um, but we have a problem and it's a, a recurring problem. We actually had the first uh person that was taking meeting minutes had done it for many, many years, very successfully for many different boards. And quite frankly, they got disgusted with the level of detail that was being required. Um, by only the planning board, not any other board that, that person was um recording notes for, including. Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission and other boards that deal with similarly complex subject matter. So, uh, it isn't going away and um, so we need to um come to a. Conclusion on what level of detail, accuracy is important, minimum is important. Having spelling corrected, lead sentences, yes, absolutely, but the level of detail is right now.
I, I have to interrupt you because i- it wasn't until the last couple of uh meetings that, that where I did the minutes. That I put some level of detail in, but when Marcy Ricker was doing the minutes and the person before her, I never added to those minutes. I corrected the grammar, that was it, so I didn't add any level of detail when I reviewed those minutes. So that is a complete misnomer, a, a, a misstatement on your part, I did not add to those minutes. I corrected the grammar.
Barney, the fact, Barney, the facts speak for themselves, whatever. I, I, I'm not, this isn't, I'm not trying to make this personal, I'm trying to get a, a, a solution here. And an understanding of what we need to be legally compliant with the requirement. Without driving away people, which we're doing, which we're doing.
I think maybe we should try and recruit people from that's uh English department uh at the, at the uh. Uh, at the schools or i- at colleges, I mean, people who have a, a good grasp of grammar.
Rick, may I speak here for a minute?
Go.
Okay, on the Attorney General's website, I went to the website to see what their standard was, the Attorney General. Massachusetts, what the standard was for minutes and I found a blurb. That I think I sent to Patrick and I may have sent to you, I don't remember what I did, but it, it, it was right there. Before I even did any research on the website to find anything, it was the first thing that popped up and it's basically says. The minutes have to have enough detail so that people will understand what is, what, what went on and what the decisions were and who was there and so on. It does not need so much detail that you have it word for word, it doesn't need that. If somebody needs that, they would go to the video of the meeting and find it.
Well, I can assure you, a four hour meeting would produce a transcript probably in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy-five pages.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just telling you what I saw, Marty. And what I think has happened is that somebody took and decided they were doing the minutes and they put two. They expected a tremendous amount of detail in the minutes and it isn't needed. And Attorney General states very clearly what is needed and I think that's our guideline.
And I, I, I absolutely agree with you a hundred percent, I agree with you. I don't disagree with you.
So, uh, Patrick, what are we doing for uh recruiting somebody to uh take meeting minutes now? Now that we're on to the fourth person.
Is Mary Alice available to take the meeting minutes?
Uh, no, she, her hours are capped right now. Uh, she uh is a part-time employee, so we don't have access to her.
She does a fabulous job.
Let me, let me finish, uh, what we're doing is we're looking for a professional service. To be able to do minutes for various boards, uh, boards of which no longer have. A transcriptionist right now, so uh, our HR director was tasked. With that duty and uh, she's uh gotten some candidates, I hope by now. And uh, we look forward to having someone uh to be able to uh transcribe our minutes in a. A uh form and fit that works with what our needs are.
Okay. All right, so, anything else, Patrick?
Uh, let's see, we have, speaking of, we have some uh. Uh, meeting minutes in uh that I've sent out to you. Uh, from uh February the ninth as well as February, February the fifteenth that uh. Marty graciously prepared.
Okay, so any discussion on meeting minutes? Or like glasses? The eighth and the fifteenth.
I never received any minutes from the uh.
The fifteenth, just the eighth, yeah.
Just the eighth.
Yeah, just the eighth.
Okay, well, that makes it easy, so any comments on the eighth?
I think the uh, Marty, the uh, the transition from the original one to this one is, is just tremendous. The uh, work that you did on this one, I thought was uh, the, the, the previous one on the eighth was uh. Not at all accurate and um, well done.
Thank you.
I agree, this was outs- an outstanding effort and it captured the, the gist of the complex conversations, I appreciated it very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, so um, somebody want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February eighth?
I'll make a motion. That we approve the planning board minutes from February eights.
Second, okay, we have a second.
Second, that.
Uh, we've got multiple seconds, so, um, all right, so uh.
Give it, give it to Richard if he wants it.
I can't take it to bed with me, so whatever, mine.
Okay, so Richard Boroff will get the second, Bill, um, roll call vote to approve.
Uh, Bill Wheaton, yes, a roll call.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Cory?
Cory, will you, I?
Jonathan?
Jonathan, poor, I.
Amal?
Amal Doc was die.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
And Rick Mitchell, I. So I think that's it.
Uh, last item. I had prepared the twenty twenty-one annual report for the planning board. I have uh gotten edit comments from uh, uh both Marty and Rick. I've incorporated those into the document that I sent to you, I guess about a week ago. I'd like to have that uh approved by the board so I could submit that to uh the town manager.
Good point. Right, because that's got to go into his, to his report to uh, the next town meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Which is in April, April seventh?
That's the voting.
Would be April the second.
Second, okay. All right, not too far away.
Yeah.
All right, uh, entertain a motion to approve the uh planning board annual report.
I made the motion to approve the uh planning board annual report, two thousand one, is it, or two?
Two, one, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
Second. We have a second.
Motion.
Okay, Cory, second motion, all right, roll call vote, Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, I.
Emo?
Emo Doc was die.
Emo, I'm sorry. Jonathan?
Jonathan, poor, I.
Cory?
Or will you, I?
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, I.
And Rick Mitchell, I. Okay, anybody want to adjourn or shall we just stay here for the night?
I have one question to ask Patrick, is there any chance of making amendments to any of our bylaws? By this meeting or is that fall?
Uh, it'll need to be fall.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not time enough now to uh make an, an amendment.
I was just thinking with all the discussion about stormwater, um, there are a couple of things we could do maybe to tighten that up. So that.
The good thing about that bill is that, um, you know, we can tighten up. Our stormwater regulations by just simply doing a public hearing because that's not. You know, that, that's a regulation, it's not.
Okay, 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 great, great.
Yeah, we should absolutely, you know, work on that and, and I know Jonathan was very interested in that as well.
Okay, great, that's a, that's, that's good to know.
Alright, very good, thank you, thank you Jonathan for volunteering to rewrite those. Uh, okay, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, wait a second, okay, everybody raise their hand.
Yay.
All right, everybody.
Folks, you need.
Stop smiling.
It's unanimous.
Sorry, you need a roll call vote, all your, all the motions.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, roll call vote, Richard.
Richard Boroff, I.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, I.
Amal?
Amal Doc was die.
Jonathan?
Jonathan, poor, I.
Cory?
Cory, will you, I?
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, I.
Mitchell, I. Pat, I know you'd, Patrick, I know, or Pat, I know you would say I if, if you could.
Agree with all of you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Alright guys.
We'll see you, we'll see you in two weeks.